All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regularly called meeting of the Temple City Council. It is currently about three minutes after five. Please rise as Buford Craig from our Transform Temple Department leads us in the invocation, followed by our pledge, which will be led by City Secretary Janet L. Ellen.
Lord, let thy Holy Spirit enlighten our minds and convince us thoroughly of our sins, so that humbled and with downcast eyes we may recognize that we stand far, far off, and with a sigh, "God be merciful to me, a sinner." But then let it befall us by thy grace, as it befell that publican who went up to the temple to pray and went down to his house justified. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our public comments. Any citizen that desires to address the council on any matter may do so, as long as you signed up prior to this meeting. Please know that no discussion or final action will be taken, and we also ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would, that plans to speak on item, the Pilateo item? Item five? Anybody? No? Okay. Very good. So, whenever you step to the podium, we ask you to state your name for the record, and also watch the timer on the screens. Limit you to about, about three minutes, maybe a little bit more. So, first person, Sue Hamby. You're up.
My name's Dr. Sue Hamby, and I'm here speaking about all the homeless we have that aren't able to get into Salvation Army. As we gather here in the comfort of a warm room, I'd like to talk to you about those in our community who don't have that simple privilege of being in a warm place, and those who will face harsh, cold, wet weather tonight without a safe place. Winter's difficult for all of us, but for people experiencing homelessness, cold weather is not a comfortable situation. Matter of fact, it can be dangerous and even life-threatening. I know the Salvation Army has an agreement with the city, but they're limited in the number they accept, and they have a list of banned individuals who can't take a warm place. So where are they supposed to go? No one chooses to live in the cold. People become homeless for many reasons, but that doesn't matter. We need to have a community that has a warm place for everybody, not just those that aren't banned. Notice I said "a community." We are a Christian community, and I think as part of our Christian responsibility, it's to give a warm place to stay, because it could mean the difference between surviving the night and not making it to the morning. We would not want that for our children, our pets, or we shouldn't want that for our homeless members of the community. And as Christians, we should allow those in our community who are homeless to have a place to live that's warm. Providing a warm shelter for all homeless during cold weather isn't an act of charity. It's an act of a Christian community. When we protect the most vulnerable among us, we show what kind of a community we are, a compassionate and responsible and a united community. As Christians, as a Christian community, we are called upon to demonstrate the love and compassion of Christ by caring for those who are most vulnerable. Providing a shelter for the homeless during cold weather is one of the most powerful ways we can live out that calling. Scripture reminds us again and again that when we welcome the stranger, feed the hungry, and protect those in need, we serve Christ. Through an act of kindness, we are showing that our faith is not just something we believe in, but something that we practice through compassion and concern. In closing, I'd like for our city to come up with a temporary lodging plan that no one in the community has left out. Together, we can create a community where warmth isn't a privilege, but a promise, one that we extend to every person, especially in the coldest months of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamby. The list that I have has a number of folks that want to speak on the warming shelter, and we want to hear every one of you. But if, if, as other people speak, if you realize that that person's already kind of said what you wanted to say and don't want to speak, that's fine. Just let me know, and we'll move on to the next person. Next up on my list is Denny Howard.
I am the Outreach Coordinator at Hilltop Recovery Ministries, and I have run Warming Shelter in the past at Impact. What I would like to say is that our city has worked to help the homeless a lot. Salvation Army can't hold everyone, which is a little bit of a repeat there, but what I wonder is, we have managed to do this at Impact Church without a fire suppression system for several years. Is that more important than the lives that may be lost on the street for not being in a warm place? A lot of people have respiratory, cardiovascular, or renal issues, and the cold is worse for them than anybody else. And not only the people on the street, but there are a lot of people living in poverty that may not have heat in their home that benefit from the shelter as they have in the past. And I'm just asking that we work together to come up with some solution to house people where all our citizens will know they are cared about and they are safe, and I hope this happens before anything like losing somebody happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Laurie Cobb's?
I think it's been well said.
Okay, very good. Gloria Bell?
My name is Gloria Bell. I'm a resident of Temple for the past 21 years, and I've been going to the Sammons Community Center for 17 of those years. Since the center has been closed, we've had one official information sheet that has come out, and that was the first week of August. Myself and a lot of other people who go to the center would like to know what's going on, what's the status of Sammons Community Center, what's the timeline. We would just like to know. Communication is awful. I asked the, the employees at Gober House, or we've been at Wilson, we've been at the golf course clubhouse, we're now at the library. We would just, nobody knows anything, so we would just like to know what is going on and when is it going to be fixed, if at all. Thank you.
Council members have had some one-on-one meetings with city staff, and I've asked Ms. Myers if she would to give the room, just a quick update.
Mayor and council, we did, we have recently, in the last several days, received the latest report, and we do have a briefing scheduled for you during the December 18th workshop. We will present three options. As, as you know, there is major damage to Sammons. It is an unsafe structure at this point, so we cannot open it until either significant repairs are made or a decision is made to reconstruct the facility. Our current estimates for the repairs are around $4.2 million. So, I mean, this is a major, you know, it's not, it's not just a roof leak or something like that. It's a major issue with the building. So, I think we have some good information that we'll be prepared to share with you and get some direction from council on what options we want to pursue at the December 18th meeting. And then after that, we can share some additional communication with the patrons of that facility as well. Until we have an update on what direction we want to go from council, there's really not much additional information that staff has that hasn't been released for, for the patrons, but just as I've stated, it's, it's a significant issue, and, and we'll need some direction from you all on how we want to proceed.
The original building was built in the 20s, is that right? 1920s?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. Then it's been built on to over, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's an old building that has some, some major issues, to the point that, like Ms. Myers said, it's, it's just simply not, not safe to, to be there. So, again, we'll work through it, but it will be a while before it reopens, for sure. Next up is Kay Cathy.
I'm Kay Cathy. Very much advocate for the homeless and, and the animals, specifically dogs, in our community. I'm the new Resource Executive Director of Impact Church Resource Center. Been working with the homeless and all the agencies for 15-plus years in the community. Impact Church has ran the Warming Center for the past five years, first two years on their own, the last three years with some support for, from the city. Impact Church is willing to put in a fire sprinkler system, but they cannot, we would have to raise the funds to do that. We would like to start with the side where the people sleep, in the, in the congregation, the worship congregation, and then maybe later on add it throughout the building, or we would like to have a different place where the homeless could go. The Salvation Army does not have room for all the people. The people that come in to see me and many of the other people in the area, they're very confused. You know, we have a lot of homeless that have major issues. I've been working with them for years. I know them, pretty much every one of them personally, and, and we need to do something so that they can have an alternate solution. If, if they are unable to go to the Salvation Army, then we need another place, whether we put them up in a hotel, or we put them up in a sister church. I'm, I'm pretty sure that Impact Church has offered to, to run another facility. I don't know why we wouldn't be able to do that, but if Impact Church is not allowed to do it, what other church or organization can step up and do this for us? Because Salvation Army cannot house everyone. Anyone that has been blue-carded, for sure, cannot go to the Salvation Army.
For our own education, what is blue, I'm up here, ma'am. Blue-carded?
I was told if they were staying at the Salvation Army and they had to call the police on them ever, then they cannot go back.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know for sure, because I'm pretty sure it's different from whoever is checking them in, because I talked to all the homeless, and I, I have a pretty good working relationship with most of the agencies. But if they have been banned from going there, maybe they missed three nights when they were staying in the facility. Can they go in to the Warming Shelter? We need to know what the rules are, or maybe they did something, they yelled, or whatever. They've got mental issues. For those people that are not allowed for one reason or another, yes, they can't go in if they have sexual charges or arson on the record. So, if they can't go in there, they're still people, and God has called us to love them, so where can they go? And I just, we just need an alternate solution. You know, we're willing to help, we're willing to do whatever, we just need an alternate solution for those who cannot go because there's not enough room, or because they can't. And then we get into the pet situation. Yes, maybe we're housing the pets at a sister facility, but most of the people who have a pet, that is like their child, that is the only thing they own, so they're not going to let their pet be somewhere else. And so, just pleading with you, begging with you, I love all the homeless, and we've got to do something from a Christian perspective to get a second alternative. There has to be two places for them to stay, and I guess that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. J. G., I think I know how to say your last name, but say it slowly.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. It's a good note, like you could call me J. G. That's why I put it in front of the J. G.
But I was gonna try, it wasn't that.
That's right. Honorable Mayor, I hope you had a good time giving the rest of these papers. A lot of good topics on about homeless. I feel I care about it. I really appreciate. Just want to switch subject here. I'm just a couple of questions, been a number guy. Question number G and K. On the G, that 1.2, 1.5, is it a renewal? You get a, like a, it's a municipal, you get repaid when you do this gas, gas billing every year? Like, how many vehicles you use?
So, staff, J. is concerned about items on the, on the consent, concerned about item J, K, P, and X. If we want to give some, if, if we're able to give some, shed some light on these questions. So, go ahead. I just want to let staff kind of prepare for.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead. Your, your time's still running.
Yeah, so, that's why I just want to make sure. On the K, though, I know it was a, it was a $2.4 million project. It's a construction project. I just want to make sure those projects, they estimate at $2.4 million, like, a lot of these projects, I've been a former banker, I see, like, sometimes they come back and say, oh, it's cost 2.4 million, then later on it increase, because it might have impact on our taxes. So, I, I want to make sure, like, we have, like, a bonding system on these contracts. And the question number P, are we changing the payment plan? I like, I pay online my bill, water and sewer, changing a different server?
Okay. You might want to also just quickly explain what we're able to talk about and what we're not in, in public comments.
Okay, sure, happy to. So, public comments, this is the chance, if you have questions on the consent agenda, to ask those questions, which is what you're doing, so that's, that's the appropriate time. And as part of public comments, we can answer fact-specific questions.
Right.
We can't get into a long back-and-forth discussion, but we are able to provide factual answers. And for P, what that is doing is that is basically creating a bank account for us to pay legal services for a specific utility expert law firm that helps us with our water, wastewater, our solid waste services, whenever we need specialized legal services to help us with some of those, those matters. This is establishing a bank account that we can pay them out of over the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, good. Question number X, that also $2.7 million. I know it said not to exceed, I like the word, not to exceed. If, if the contractors come back and say, hey, it's going to be exceeding, hopefully we could save the budget. So, that's all I have, questions. I appreciate it. Hope everyone have a great Christmas.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's good to see you again.
Yes, sir.
You always, you always bring good questions.
Mayor, would you like me to address the other questions?
If you would like, yes.
Sure. So, item J is to consider adopting a resolution which authorizes a one-year renewal for our Fleet Corps Technologies or Fuel Man contract. As council may recall, the city of Temple does not have a centralized fueling station for unleaded and diesel. We use retail locations throughout the community to fuel our vehicles. So, in order to, to do this through, you know, a cost-effective way and one that complies with our state and local purchasing requirements, that we ask you to enter into this agreement, where each of our vehicle operators has a Fuel Man card. They are able to use this at a variety of different retail locations throughout the community that participate in this program. It provides a 3.5 cents per gallon for gasoline discount off of the retail price and 7.5 cent discount per gallon of diesel for any of the retail locations that participate in Fuel Man. So, our vehicles are allowed to fill up at any of these locations, as long as they're a Fuel Man provider. So, it's basically the way that we fuel city fleet vehicles, with the exception of our compressed national, natural gas and propane vehicles, which we do have a city-owned fueling station for those, too. For item K, this is a construction contract for the renovation of Jones Park. This is a fixed-price contract, so it will not exceed unless we ask for a change order from the company. So, they have agreed to, this has been a competitively bid project, and they will install this, do this work, and it's a fixed price, so it will not exceed that amount unless there's something about the scope that we agree to change, and that would go through, back through the, the course of approval that's required. Cathy already addressed P, so I think the last one was X. It is a, this is for the purchase of a downtown office building located at 19 North Main Street. The negotiated price for this building is $200, $2,250,000. So, the only variable is the closing cost, which we estimate at $25,000, but that's what would be the, would be an estimated amount. So, we've agreed to pay $2,250,000 for the building plus closing cost, and that's an estimate until we, for those of, of you who've purchased property before, until we have the, the final closing statement, but we feel like that would be around the $25,000. So, that's why it has an estimated amount versus a specific amount. It's just associated with the closing cost, but the purchase of the building is a fixed price.
Very good. Thank you. Jody Reyes? Would, would you like to speak, or you, you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay. You bet. Thank you, ma'am. And last, CJ Grisham.
First, I promise I'm not trying to look cool. I have a migraine that is light-sensitive, and so, these are my migraine glasses. Probably not going to be talking as loud as I normally do either. So, I, I heard something about legal services. I think what the city needs is an attorney that we pay on constitutional legal services, because the city doesn't seem to understand the Bill of Rights very well. The First Amendment, well, first of all, I'll, I'll talk about that later, but I will tell you that if a person wants to get up here and talk about their candidacy, they have a right to. There is, there is case law on this issue. It's a matter of public concern. Matters of public concern cannot be censored. And yet, that's exactly what you did, I guess about a month ago. I've been trying to get in here, but it seems every, every time I, we have a meeting, I'm out of county at court and don't get back in time. But what I really want to talk about are flock cameras here in the city, which are a violation, in my opinion, of the Fourth Amendment rights of the citizens of Temple. And while the flock technology, which is, for those that don't know, this is license plate readers. These are set up, I believe there's at least 36 around the city, that are set up around the city. I may be wrong one way or the other, but let's just say there's more than one. And what these things do is they track and record several bits of data. And while there's not specific case law on flock cameras, trust me, I look forward to creating it, there is case law on how government and when government can track people. For example, you can't put a tracker on a vehicle without a warrant and track that person's path around the city and where they go on a daily basis without a warrant. That's an invasion of your, your rights. But what these flock cameras do, it's not just taking a picture, but if you've got a, a camera right here, right outside, and, and I'm not saying we do, I'm just saying, but there's a camera here, and it takes a picture of my license plate, and then down by the highway, it's taking a picture of my license plate, and then when I get to Belton, it's taking a picture of my, well, let's stick to Temple. And then I, I get down to Walmart, and it's taking a picture. You're, you're tracking my movements. Those things are recording where I'm going and how I'm going, and it's doing it without a warrant. And there's plenty of case law that's analogous to what these flock cameras are doing. And I hear the arguments, oh, but you know, we, what if it's a stolen vehicle? Yeah, what if it's a stolen vehicle? Great. But there's something called the Blackstone's Law Ratio. The Blackstone's Ratio posits that it is better that 99 guilty people go free than one innocent person be locked away and have their freedom taken from them. And what these flock cameras are doing is flipping that on its head, and it's taking the data of 99 innocent people to try and catch that one guilty person. And I really hope that what happens in this city is what I see over in the UK and Europe, where, and I, I can't see very well, I'm sorry, my time's up. I'll just end it, that, you know, the citizens, if the city's not going to do something about these flock cameras and get them out, I'll be preparing a brief for you guys, and I'll send it to you. Unfortunately, my migraine prevented me from getting to my office today.
Thanks, CJ. Moving on to the consent agenda, all items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by a council member, any item may be removed from that consent agenda at the request of that council member and will be considered separately. Based on the discussion in workshop council, it's my understanding, council and staff, it's my understanding that we do not need to pull anything from the consent. Has that changed? We still good? All right. Then council, at this time, I will entertain a motion on item 3A through 3AA.
I move to approve the consent agenda, item 3A through 3AA.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, please cast your vote. Item 3A through 3AA passes five votes to zero. This, this is a fun one. Next, next item is item four. It's the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the rezoning request from Ag to Light Industrial on 921.296 plus or minus acres, identified as parcel number 371824, 127256, 117158, 24230, 123208, 61017, 399302, 399303, 117703, 93039, 96737, 438099, 97437, 41915, 19167, 78150, 392942, 15093, 318002, 49791, 68737, 72657, 148557, 14858, 454459, 41914, 454460, 111602, 127967, 49792, 1485555. Last but not least, 30984.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Good news is that is likely the last time you're going to have to read in that really long description, so that's good. This is a zoning change before you this evening that is straight zoning from agricultural to light industrial. It's coming to you for the first reading tonight and then final reading on December 18th. So, a little bit of background and the location, you can see the subject property on the right on the map. It is a little over 900 acres. It is intended for expansion of North Industrial Park. It is part of a previous annexation that was just approved on consent agenda for the 849 acres, and it is overall part of a larger economic development in the area that is consistent with our comprehensive plan that has identified this area as future industrial growth. So, right now, it is agricultural and going to be straight light industrial. And then I do have on the screen just a, a list of the different uses that can be in Ag versus light industrial, just to show the comparisons for them. And for the industrial uses, just for the general public, any of the light industrial uses can be applicable in this area. And then for some surrounding area, the, it's predominantly rural and undeveloped land. We do recommend approval. It is consistent with the industrial development in the area, and it does comply with the city's laws.
So this is the only heavy industrial bit north of the loop. So that, that hopefully answers the question that came out in workshop. Thank you for sharing that.
That dark purple.
Yeah, the dark purple.
Jason is anything that's been, that is currently zone heavy industrial.
(Music)
Restart where you left off?
Yes, we've restarted the meeting. I think Kelly is just going to not let people join, but they can still.
Okay.
Fired by law to allow public comments. Hearings here. Others can watch from outside, so hopefully that will address it.
Okay.
They may come, come back, we'll take it as it comes.
Very good, thank you.
All right. So when we stopped, we were talking about the surrounding zoning. We'll go on to the next slide. There we go. So this is compliant with the future land use plan. It designates this area as industrial. It is the industrial park and it is not adjacent to or cross by any of our thoroughfare alignments. However, it is nearby the HK Dodge and Loop, which is a highway. And that's appropriate in the industrial park for movement of freight goods and employees. I know she's, she's handling stuff in the background.
Are you able to activate our monitors from there? Because we're, we're just getting a joint meeting. The little clicker on the bottom?
Yes, because they're, they're just gonna broadcast the zoom, so it won't be inactive. Is that, is that my understanding? Yeah, so just know there is a slight delay, so don't push it more than once. Give it some time, or you just go back to the other screen.
Okay.
And then you'll have to click that again to get back to your voting buttons. I apologize for that.
That's all right, we can, we can handle it. Just need to know what to do next. Go ahead.
Right. There are utilities to the site. There's a number of fire hydrants you see with the red dots. There's water that runs along the southern and eastern boundary. And then that sewer line that I described before, you can see where that runs up the western boundary and then crosses on that northern. That's the one that they're proposed to reconstruct at their expense. Mobility review, we looked at crashes for the last five years. The majority of them are along the loop. At the intersection, there was one fatality, not at Lucius McKelvey, but at the next road to the east. But of the eighty-three crashes, one fatal, two serious, and ten minor injuries. So, serious, not, not the, the most serious that we've seen. If the majority are not injury causing crashes. There's fourteen thousand daily trips on Loop three sixty-three in that area. That was measured twenty twenty-four. I assume we'll start getting new counts here in the near future. For the twenty twenty, which are the urban saturation, those are those red dots on your map. We'll start getting those twenty twenty-five counts. So we'll have more of an up-to-date traffic volume for the minor streets and the side streets that connect to those highways. But in twenty twenty, Lucius McKelvey carried two thousand seven hundred trips, which makes sense. There's a number of businesses that feed off of that road. As far as the amount of traffic generated from this use, given the size of it, general light industrial, the Institute for Traffic Engineers doesn't give me a specific formula for a chemical plant. They just group all light manufacturing and industrial together. So anywhere from five hundred to five hundred and sixty-five. If it was purely warehousing, that's a low traffic use, around eighty-six, given the size. And as mentioned with the rail spur, the number of trips generated may be reduced because they're using that rail spur and they're not shipping material by trucks. You can ship a lot more in a rail tank. So in the overall compliance summary, it is compliant with future development, surrounding uses. There's public facilities, thoroughfare plan, mobility master plan, and then it's not in a neighborhood plan. We did send out four notices to property owners within two hundred feet. We've received no notices back and the notice was published in the Telegram on November sixth. So these are the approval conditions. If you had looked at the CUP, you'll notice that the only thing that's added is number one, to allowing that chemical plant in this property under the light industrial. Everything else is verbatim, so that the whole site is regulated in the same manner. To all their mandatory permits from TCQ, EPA permitting, building and fire code applies to the entire site in the same way. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from light industrial to planned development light industrial. Subject to those conditions, at the November seventeenth meeting, planning zoning commission recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dagman. Counsel, anything for Jason? Item five is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. We ask you step to the podium and state your name for the record. Anybody? All right, very good. Did y'all switch that up here? Okay, never mind. So counsel, I will entertain a motion on item five.
Make a motion to approve item five?
Did I close the public hearing? Nope, I don't think I did. Public hearing is closed, go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item five passes five votes to zero. Item six is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning request from ag and commercial with a conditional use permit to commercial and repealing an existing conditional use permit on four point five six plus or minus acres situated in the M Shipman survey, abstract number seven eight two, and the S Botford survey, abstract number one one eight, City of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as six six one eight and six eight zero eight, North General Bruce Drive. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So, we are back with another zoning. This also involves a CUP that you may remember came forward to counsel this last summer. This is for rezoning from ag and commercial and repealing the CUP that counsel approved as it's no longer applicable. So it's four and a half acres. It's two properties that they're, they are keeping separate. They're not working towards a plat at this time, but they want the, the whole set to be under the same zoning so that they can work on marking that, find a tenant or a buyer. But they don't have a specific use identified at this point. They just want to get it rezoned. It's along the highway. The CUP was for a truck service center, which when we looked at that, we said, you know, that makes sense, that's a good location for a truck service center. Since then, that owner has made a business decision to sell that property. The new applicant, the buyer, doesn't want to be bound by the CUP. If they get a similar business that was really crafted for that business and his needs, they would rather have no CUPs and have a uniform clean zoning across the, the whole property. That said, it's in the industrial sub-district for the I thirty-five overlay. So if a use comes forward, even if it's another truck service center, they would have to come back and request that CUP for that specific use with the site planning conditions, just like we did for the last applicant. So the rationale for approval on this one is to enable that commercial development along the interstate, repeal the CUP for sixty-six eighteen, that's the southern half. The applicant sold the property, it's no longer applicable. And UDC three point five sets the process that the same way you approve the CUP is the same way you revoke it. So you can see on the site photos, it's, it's an undeveloped property. There's a large drainage channel on the frontage road on that lower left. And then on the right, in the distance, you can see the, the signs for quick trip. So it's not too far from that corner. Here's the zoning map, predominantly surrounded by ag. That red area is the commercial CUP zoning that was recently approved. The I thirty-five overlay, you know, covers along the whole property. There's some industrial to the north. So the comprehensive plan shows this as regional commercial. It's a highway and commercial development is compliant along the highway. There's a ten-inch water line along Pegasus Drive to the back of the property. There's an eight-inch gravity main along Pegasus, and you see it at the bottom of the map. It's more than five hundred feet away. They would have to find a method to extend, whether that's easement, purchasing other properties, whether that line gets, the sewer line particularly gets extended up Pegasus and over, or it follows up the frontage road, that would be on the applicant or their tenants, and it's probably subject to the type of use that they want to bring into that area. That's something that would be confirmed if and when the property is platted, but there are nearby utilities. Mobility review, in the same area, we looked at for this one. In the last five years, two serious injuries, twelve minor injuries, no fatal injuries, which is good news. Most of those crashes were not on the frontage road, they were on the main lanes. They're unsafe, lane changes, speeding, and distracted driving. So put the phone down, I'll say that all the time, put the phone down, please. The volume on I thirty-five, no surprise, ninety-three thousand. There's places in Temple where that number is over a hundred thousand now. This is a busy highway, but the frontage road in this area is not quite as busy. We've got some counts on the ramp and the frontage road, around a thousand to nineteen hundred trips a day. And as far as trip generation, kind of an educated guess on what could be there, you know, tire superstore, trade contractor, could be a couple hundred trips a day. That's gonna be highly dependent on the type of use and the scale of the building. So we would have to determine that once it comes in for plating, or if it needed a CUP, depending on the use, then we'll have a better idea of what's coming forward and what type of access management needs to be applied, given that this is on I thirty-five frontage road, any access management, driveway spacing, turn lanes is gonna be subject to text dot review as well. So it is compliant with all our categories, the future development plan, public utilities, thoroughfare, and it's not in a neighborhood plan. We don't have a neighborhood district this far north. We did send out ten notices to property owners within two hundred feet, and you see that green A at the southern end, that they responded in agreement. And the public hearing was published in the Telegram on November sixth. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from ag and commercial with a CUP to commercial and repeal of the existing CUP. And at the November seventeenth meeting, P and Z voted to recommend approval, six to zero. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, anything for Jason? Very good. All right, I'll open the public hearing on item five. As you step to the podium and state your name. Anybody? Did I see? I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I'm opening the public hearing on item six. Still nobody. All right, very good. I will close the public hearing. And counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item number six.
I'm going to approve item number six as presented.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pilkington, second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item six passes five votes to zero. Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing to consider amending ordinance number nine four dash two two nine six, setting the city's contribution rate to the Temple Firefighters' Pension Fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and fiscal year twenty twenty-seven and future years, providing a severability clause, providing effective dates, and providing an open meeting clause. Ms. Bernard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Just a little bit of background, the city contributes to the retirement plan for the firefighters in the Temple Fire Department. The fund is a single employer contributory defined benefit plan. The plan is administered by the Board of Directors, or Board of Trustees of the Temple Firefighters' Relief and Retirement Fund. The composition of the board is the mayor or the mayor's designated rep, the chief financial officer or their rep, three members of the retirement system elected by participating members, and two persons who reside in the state who are not officers or employees of the municipality. Contribution provisions of the fund are authorized by the Texas Local Firefighters' Retirement Act, also called the TELFR. TELFR provides the authority and the procedure to change the amount of the contributions determined as a percentage of the pay by each firefighter and a percentage of the payroll by the city. The funding policy of the Temple Fireman's, Firefighters' Relief and Retirement Fund requires equal to sixteen percent of the pay by firefighters, the rate elected by the firefighters, according to TELFR. Again, that's a firefighter's contribution. The city contributes according to ordinance that was adopted in nineteen ninety-four, number two ninety-four dash two two nine six, either the same percentage of payroll that the city contributes to TMRS, the Texas Municipal Retirement System. Full retirement rate for other employees, which currently is seventeen point five seven percent, or the firefighter contribution rate of sixteen percent of payroll, if less. And again, this, the city's contribution rate is, is the lesser, currently at the sixteen percent. The city also has agreed to contribute an additional point two four percent of payroll for long-term disability to the fund. In the past year, based on the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four actuarial report, we had a, the, the board had some special studies performed by an actuary to analyze the impact of additional contributions to the fund. And it was, again, the baseline was the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four report, which showed an amortization period to pay off the full unfunded accrued liability of thirty point five years. There's different methods that that is not acceptable and different methods of how that could be decreased, preferably down to twenty years, but we looked at a scenario with twenty-five, twenty, four different scenarios to get it to twenty years, and then two scenarios that showed it twenty-five years. And with discussion with management and the Board of Directors of the Fireman's Pension, the, the president, management agreed and included in the FY twenty-six adopted budget, funding for scenario one A going halfway to the seventeen point seven nine percent contribution on the city side. That would bring the expected years, and if you got fully up to the seventeen point seven nine percent, down to twenty-five years for the amortization period. But something that is not considered in this actuarial study, nor the impact of the, the various scenarios, is the additional, the number of firefighters that are, were approved in twenty twenty-six, plus, and how many were the, over the six-year plan?
I think seventy.
When those come online, it can significantly reduce this amortization period. And what staff is recommending is to go to sixteen point nine percent and stay at that and continue at the point two four percent, and then review this again based on a more recent actuarial study and additional studies to show the addition of the firefighters over the next six years. I'm not a, I'm not an actuary, I can't explain all of that really good, but I'll be happy to take any questions you have on, on the recommendation. And the estimated cost for FY twenty twenty-six, which was included in the budget, is eighty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. I believe the effective date of this would be pay period beginning tomorrow, or December nineteenth, if approved. And this is the first, first reading of the ordinance.
But eighty-eight thousand dollar impact is, is just based upon adding the point nine percent?
Correct.
Is it, if you'll go back here? So the firefighter would be contributing sixteen percent?
Correct.
Is that a mandatory contribution?
It's, it's determined by TELFR, but they, they voted recent, it was in the past few years, they did, the members voted to increase their contribution rate up, and they increased it to sixteen percent. They have not considered another vote. That could be an option, a vote on their side to increase their percentage too, that they contribute.
We did look at peer cities of what other departments contribute. Sixteen percent is on the high end. Ours was a little bit lower than, than the other peers that have this type of system. Again, depart, or everyone else in the city is covered under TMRS, which is a seventeen, what is it, Tracy, this?
Seventeen seventy, seventeen seventy-nine.
So the city contributes seventeen fifty-seven
Seventeen fifty-seven, I'm sorry.
For all other employees, and employees contribute seven percent. So the firefighters are already at a higher percentage than general government and police officers. So we, the thirty-plus years of, of amortization is not in an acceptable range based on actuarial recommendations. Twenty-five is, twenty is ideal, but again, as Tracy mentioned, just for fiscal, fiscal needs, we are recommending getting up to this, to the twenty-five-year rate in a two-step process. So a little bit this year, a little bit next year, and then we think when we redo this actuarial study after, after bringing on so many additional firefighters, that that might help drop the numbers. So we would reevaluate after that occurs. So that is our recommendation. Again, there are many different scenarios. We looked particularly at four. There's a lot of different ways you could slice it, but we feel like based on the market and getting a sound system, that this is the best course of action at this time.
But this will take care of, over an extended period of time? But it'll take care of the unfunded pension liability, right?
It'll get it to twenty-five years. Twenty years is ideal, but twenty-five is acceptable. And so we would, we would recommend, staff would recommend, that we do another actuarial study, but we, we first do these two increases, this one this year, the, the next step next year, get the new firefighters on and see how that changes the, you know, we may need to consider additional contributions either from the firefighters or from the city if we stay higher than twenty and we want to get to twenty, but twenty-five is within the range of accept, acceptability.
I'm glad to see us doing it. Some, some municipalities have a huge unfunded pension liability and are doing nothing about it.
Yeah, it's not an insurmountable.
Right.
We, we're in a, a good spot and in a way that, you know, again, for, I think the fiscal impact this year is a little bit under ninety thousand. Of course, the burden is shared both between the city and the employees. Again, they're at, they're at sixteen percent. And that is, like I said, well within the range that our peer cities, that firefighters and other organizations are contributing. So this nineteen ninety-four resolution had us capped at the, at the amount, you know, we, the city would contribute no more than the firefighters contribute, even though we contribute more than that for every other employee. So in my estimation, this is fair for us to contribute a little bit more, close that gap, and then reevaluate in a couple of years to see what, if any, additional steps need to be taken.
When you say twenty-five is acceptable, twenty is ideal years, does that, are you saying that at this additional contribution rate, based upon all actuarial evidence available, that it would take twenty-five years to make up the unfunded liability? We're not, we're not talking about length of time that a firefighter would be retired.
No, yeah.
We're talking about the length of time it would take to catch up
Amortize that.
Based upon a certain percentage rate, et cetera, et cetera.
Jim, I think you're right.
Is that, is that the right way to say that?
I understand.
I, I, that is my, like Tracy, of course, neither of us are actuaries, and that is a very, as you know from your career, that's a very specific set of skills. But, you know, my, my understanding is correct, you are correct in what you've stated, that you, there, there is no, it is not reasonable to get to zero, and the target is somewhere between twenty, twenty-five. We're currently at thirty point five. That is not, you know, that, that's not where we would like to be. We would like to be at at least twenty-five and south of that ideally.
You know, to Carl's point, there's, there's lots of, lots of counties and cities out there that are hoping this doesn't run off the rails, right? Because they, they have such a large unfunded amount. Although it is expensive and it does take years to catch up, to Carl's point, I'm, I'm glad that it's being addressed, because, you know, at some point, as they say, the, the chickens come home to roost, and it'll be a problem later, so.
I just want to clarify on this, and the, the ordinance, Kathy, and pulled it up, but the, the goal is, is for the same, at the same time that we change the TMRS rate in January, which is the first pay period effective December nineteenth of twenty twenty-five, the rate would get, the city's contribution rate would go to sixteen point nine. And then the same period in twenty twenty-seven, FY twenty twenty-seven, whatever we changed the TMRS rate in January, it would go up to the seventeen point seven nine percent. I, I want to make sure that that's what, what it does, and that's the intent. Right? The second reading will make sure that is, is done.
My original goal was to do it in one step, but y'all didn't let me, so, no, I'm just teasing. In balancing the budget, we've identified that a two-year period was a more appropriate way to get where we needed to be.
Okay, very good. Counsel, anything else around that? Counsel, anything else around that? All right, very good. Item number seven is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. We ask you step to the podium. I don't think they're stepping to the podium.
Please don't ask any hard questions.
Okay, if there is no one that would like to speak during the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing on item number seven. And counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve item seven.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item seven passes five votes to zero. Currently, it's about six fifteen. I want to thank everyone for attending and this meeting of the Temple City Council. What?
Our Leadership Temple person.
Oh, how many leadership, just Conley. Conley, stand up. So tell us who you are and what you're getting from Leadership Temple.
I'm learning a lot of great information and meeting a lot of interesting officials.
You've lived in this county your whole life. Did you know everything that you're learning? Did you even know it was out there? We do.
You've been.
We have a lot of judges.
That's probably a good thing.
I think you were speeding one time.
We have a lot of judgmental people, but only one designated judge, okay? Yep. So for y'all that don't know, real quick, the, the Temple Chamber of Commerce puts on this program every year called Leadership Temple, and companies can nominate and pay for an employee to attend, and they spend time learning about the, the county and the cities and Fort Hood and just, you know, it's just a good immersive project that, that is good for up and coming leaders in the, in the area. So Conley, congratulations, and I'm, I'm sure you're enjoying it. So with that, I will, it's now six fifteen exactly, and I will close this meeting. Thank you all for attending.